By reading this document. As Chair of Division Two of the House Finance Committee, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic in an accordance with House Rule 67 and the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. This public meeting is pertaining to Division Two. And we are looking today at the ways and means. Yeah, ways, ways and means. Things, thank you, my mind went blank, as well as going through some issues in the draft HB2. Please note that there is no fiscal location for members of the public to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting. However, in accordance with emergency order, I am confirming that all members of the committee and select legislative staff have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Zoom electronic meeting platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting by the Zoom platform or by telephone. All necessary access information has been made available in the House calendar and through the electronic calendar on the General Court website. The notice for this meeting complies with House Rules and RSA 91A. Anyone who has a problem accessing the meeting should email lba underscore fiscal at leg dot state dot nh dot us. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. LBA staff are on the meeting assisting us. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Representative Lynn, if you would call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Representative Bucco?
Yes, thank you. I'm present. I'm at home in Conway and there's no one else in the House.
Representative Danielson is not here. Representative Heath?
Mary Heath, here in Manchester, in my home, and I'm home alone.
I, Bob Lynn, I'm here, present in my home in Manchester. My wife is here but is not present in the room and my son should be landing in Tel Aviv just about now. He finally got off. Representative Murray?
Good morning. Kate Murray here in Newcastle. My husband at the moment is in the kitchen doing dishes. Then he will be heading down to the basement.
Representative Petrie?
Right, I'm here in Farmington. I'm with the dog and the wife again, roaming around and a few rats.
Thank you. Representative Umberger?
Yes, good morning, everyone. I am at my home in Kearsarge. My husband is wandering around someplace in the house. Otherwise, I'm alone.
Right. Thank you. That's the roll.
I think you're muted, Representative. You're muted.
Yes, I'm sorry. You were going to go through the revenues that Ways and Means is projecting for 2022 and 23. And to give us sort of an idea as to where we stand and the differences, I guess, between what the Governor is recommending and what we passed on the House floor on Thursday of last week. So I hope everyone received the email and the information that Mickey sent. It was three pages, so it's not a great deal, but we're going to look at Education Trust Fund, the Highway Fund and HB2. Fish and Game basically was the same as the Governor's budget. So we really have no need to go through that with today. So anyhow, I'll turn it over to Mr. Landrigan. And if you have questions as we're going through, please just raise your hand and we'll call on you. So Mickey, if you would, go ahead, please.
Sure. Do you have a preference where we start, Representative?
It doesn't, it doesn't matter.
So what's probably going to happen for a big picture? You know, if we want to talk general and education combined surplus statement, Mike Kane is going to be working on that. And we'll do something as a full committee likely at some point soon to go over that. Today, we can discuss, and I've got documents here for you that kind of break out just the Education Trust Fund because that usually falls just on Division Two as well as the Highway Fund. And then I did pluck some of the subject matter from the House Bill two, the Trailer Bill draft that we got a couple of weeks ago. We'll speak more about that when we get to it. So maybe right now we'll start with, we'll start with the Education Trust Fund document. And just a reminder, these documents are online on our budget document page in the Division Two specific page. So if the public is looking for them, they are available online right now. So I'll share a screen here. So can you, can you all see this document?
Mickey, can you expand that a little bit?
Yep, I can kind of zoom in and we'll work our way down. Does that, that work? So this format should be pretty familiar to everybody. It's essentially just that, that basic surplus statement type look, starting with the beginning balance of fiscal '21 and ending with what the projected balance would be based on these budget components at the end of fiscal '23. So for the Education Trust Fund, starting pretty close to zero, we're going to start with a deficit balance of 3.2 million to begin this fiscal year that we're currently in. We've plugged in the House base revenues up top and the adjustments as well, starting here on line 15 through 21. As you know, combined education and Highway Fund, excuse me, Education and General Fund, the revenues were about $80 million less the House Ways and Means and the House adopted revenues than the Governors'. And the breakout of that is approximately 50 million of it was in the Education Trust Fund and 30 was attributable to the General Fund. So the base revenues and there is a complicated split with some of these. Some of these business taxes, for instance, get split between the General Fund and Education Trust Fund. It's not an across-the-board for each revenue source. If at a later time we wanted to dive into that, we could. I do have a document I could send all of you just so at least you have a reference if you're curious which revenue source and how it gets split. I'll send that to the committee. So you've got that on hand.
That would, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Mickey, are the the business profit and the BET, are those based on the Governor's reductions? Or are they based on current law?
That is a good question. So when we talk about base revenues, those are current law. So everything from line four to 12, these are all revenue estimates based on current law. If we jump down to line 16, or it's really 17, and 18, 19, 20, these are the adjustments necessary for the proposed changes in the taxes that we should see in House Bill two when we get it.
Thank you.
Yep, so so just for quick reference, the revenue adjustments that are in the Governor's recommended budget now total about $18 million over the biennium. So I'm going to start right at the beginning. We'll just flow right through this entire document. So starting with our negative 3.2 million dollar balance, we're going to take our base revenues. The folks who have been on Division Two in the past will remember in the last budget, there was a pretty significant surplus in the Education Trust Fund. And one of the decisions made by budget writers at the time was to allocate 62 and a half million dollars in fiscal '19, put it aside in a restricted account within the Education Trust Fund, knowing it was going to be spent as part of that one-time education revenue, or excuse me, education fund grants in fiscal '21. So this line 16, when you see the 62.5 million dollar additional designated for education aid, that's really just using that money that's been sitting set aside for this year. And I'm just going to skip down. If you look at line 27, you'll see the expenditure of it. So it's really a net zero what's going on this year. That was revenue that was collected a couple of years ago and set aside to be spent this year. So the only revenue adjustment that we have for fiscal '21 is just that 62.5 million made available from that designated pot. So all told, base revenues and that 62.5 million dollars is an anticipated addition of 1.1 billion dollars in fiscal '21 to the Education Trust Fund. So spending appropriations, we've got adequacy charter schools, the other state aid programs, school building aid, special ed aid, we'll get into those. This current budget was the first time those other state programs were pulled into the Education Trust Fund. And this was also something that budget writers recognized last year as with the surplus in the Education Trust Fund, this was an opportunity to fund those programs with it rather than with general fund dollars. So the numbers that you see here, starting with lines 26 through 33, for all three years, this is what's appropriated. So this is what's in House Bill one or House Bill three technically now for fiscal '21 because we had House Bill three and four this year. And then looking ahead at 22, fiscal '22 and fiscal '23, these are the appropriation levels that the Governors recommended budget. So those are plugged in there now. So you know your starting point as a division. Obviously, as you make changes to any line items in these, in this fund, we would adjust the surplus statement accordingly.
Mickey, Mary has, Representative Heath has a question.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Mickey, these are a done deal. No deductions can be made for this. This is already in statute. So this stays as is. Am I correct?
For fiscal '21?
Yes.
Yep, yep. So for, so I don't know if the Governor's House Bill two, I didn't really see anything in the draft and I'm not sure because I'd have to double check, but I believe we did for the biennium only that ended this year. So if the idea is to continue funding these programs from the Education Trust Fund, a House Bill two section will be necessary. If for whatever reason that's not in the bill as introduced, I would consider that like a technical thing that the Division, Division Two could square up. We could take care of that.
Thank you.
So as I mentioned, all of these programs, this is these amounts here in fiscal '21 represent what was appropriated in House Bill three. On line 35, we generally don't budget an Education Trust Fund lapse. So when we set, when we set the budget for every two years through the Education Trust Fund, we appropriate at a level that we think are the best estimates of what is the actual expenditure going to be. So there's no anticipated lapse because really if everything goes well, you're going to spend it pretty close to what you, what you expended. We have learned that in fiscal '21, there's going to be about a 16.4 million dollar lapse, unexpended appropriations. And as you know, these programs specifically, this is related to adequacy and charter schools. As enrollments change, obviously the amount that the state pays changes. So between adequacy charter schools and there might be a little bit based on the school building aid appropriation that was put out, there's going to be 16.4 million dollars of unexpended appropriations this year. So that's why you see that represented as a positive here versus the appropriations negative. So that's essentially going to help your bottom line. So all told, on line 38, you'll see that the current year balance for the Education Trust Fund is 3.1 million, which means revenues over anticipated expenditures, positive 3.1. When you net that against our starting balance of negative 3.2, it gets to a $98,000 deficit. And what is done generally is the Controller's Office will true up the Education Trust Fund in the case of a deficit with a general fund transfer. So this budget picture includes a $98,000 transfer from general funds to get to an ending balance in the Education Trust Fund of $0. I'll pause there to see if we have any questions.
Mickey? So special education, tuition, transportation, school building aid were all put in the Education Trust Fund in '18?
'20 and '21. So it was the '19 session, yeah.
Okay, yeah, 19, yeah, 19. Okay, so if those are not currently continued in HB2, then those in fact could come out of there. Is that what you're suggesting?
It's up to you. There's no, there's nothing outside of statutory change that decides how those programs are paid. So if the committee and when you develop a budget, you would like those programs to be general funded, we can just switch the appropriation in the budget to general fund and make sure the statute ties to that decision or vice versa, if you want to have everything in the Education Trust Fund or even a combination of, you know. So as being responsible for House Bill one and two, you've got the flexibility to do what you want with those programs. The only above statute, if you will, restriction on anything here is lottery revenue. So way up top, that 120 million, 125, 127, by the Constitution, that revenue needs to go to schools. So everything else, my understanding, would be up to you in House Bill two and House Bill one, how you want to position your budget.
Representative Heath, you had a question?
More of a comment. In the last budget cycle, the reason why we took special ed, TNT and school building aid and brought it into the trust was because we had those funds and then we could release general fund funds to give more flexibility to some of the other divisions. But it worked out well because it's, it's education oriented. So it worked within the context of the law. So I thought it was a good move at the time and made good use of the funds. Thank you.
Representative Murray?
Yeah, thank you. This is kind of a dumb question. Mickey, what are the numbers that you used to get the 98 million? Or is it 98,000? What are those two lines?
So the 98,000 just represents the amount needed from the General Fund to finish on that next line of zero. So.
Which lines did you use to get that? Is that?
So it's essentially your beginning balance. So the 3.207, it's a negative. But then you had a positive year. The net of those two amounts is $98,000.
Can you give me the line numbers?
It's line one and 38, shouldn't that to 98,000?
Thank you.
Representative Bucco?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Mickey, I had a, I had a phone call I had to take the minute you started this. So let me, I just want to make sure that I understand where we're going here. You started with revenues. You started with fiscal year '21 and you went through revenues and then I, and then appropriate, and then revenue, revenue adjustments and then appropriations. I came in sometime, someplace in within appropriations. Did I miss anything that I need to know?
I was just discussing Representative Bucco that so once we've got our revenues estimated for the year, we're going to apply the appropriations that were made. These rows 26 through 33 are what was actually budgeted. And then on line 35, we anticipate this year 16.4 million of it won't, will lapse, won't be spent just because of the actual data of students being in the formulas for the aid programs, which gets you down to a positive year of 3.109 million. When you apply that to the negative starting position, we still need $98,000 from the general fund to get to a zero balance.
Very good. Thank you.
So I'll move on to fiscal '22 and '23, which is our upcoming biennium. So as I mentioned, the $98,000 would bring the balance of the fund to zero. So we're going to start fiscal '22 with a zero balance. Now we're going to apply our base revenues, just over a billion dollars. And we're going to now see these revenue adjustments based on the Governors' proposed changes that we will see in House Bill two. In fiscal '22, in total, it's 5.6 million dollars, which gets your net available revenues estimated for fiscal '22 in the Education Trust Fund to 1.066 billion dollars. Moving on to the appropriations. So this document now just has plugged in what you see in the Governor's Budget Bill, the recommended budget. So adequacy set at 940 million, charter schools, just under 47 million, the low and moderate income homeowners program, 800,000 a year, special education aid and tuition and transportation set at the same levels as last year. And then for school building aid, the amount funded, my understanding, is just the tail payments and there was no funding in there for new traditional school building aid projects. These programs, everything I just mentioned, with the exception of the low and moderate homeowners program, the department will be in with us on a Wednesday to discuss these in more detail. So there was a slight tweak proposed adequacy related to free and reduced lunch enrollments. We'll see that in House Bill two. And then I don't think there was any law changes relative to the other programs, but the department will be able to walk us through where those numbers are, how they were derived and what they will serve, what the the aid going out to the districts.
Mickey? Oh, I see lots of hands up. Okay. Mary, you're, you seem to be at the top of the screen, so go ahead.
Thank you. Oh, there was my phone. I'm sorry. You know what? Why don't you take somebody else and let my phone?
Okay, Representative Lynn? Please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mickey, can I just ask? I see on line 27 that there is no appropriation or proposed appropriation for the next two fiscal years for additional education aid. Could, could you just kind of explain to me what that, what that was and why it's not being proposed now? What, I'm not sure I understand.
Sure. We'll get way more into the education funding formula, probably Wednesday morning, definitely Wednesday morning. But essentially what happened was budget writers in the last biennium set the education funding payments in fiscal '21 to also include fiscal capacity disparity aid as well as some enhanced aid relative to free and reduced lunch student populations. That was legislated to repeal June 30 of this year. So that was intended, that was put in law just to apply for one year.
All right. You know, can I have a follow up?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. You know, just, just one question. Am I understanding from what you just said then that there is already in the, in line 26, the adequate education aid, there is already some adjustment for free and reduced lunch? Is that correct?
That's correct. And rather than, yep, rather than it being a new aid component, it's just going to be a requirement for the Department of Education to use a different ADMA figure when calculating regular adequacy. So I maybe could have broken some of that portion out, the amount attributable to doing that on this line or maybe created another row. But we can work with the committee and I'll work with the department and we can break out the aid components for all three years if that's useful for the committee as we move forward.
Thank you.
So the House. We have more questions.
Representative Heath?
Oh, thank you. And I apologize for my phone ringing. My granddaughter is sick in Florida and she's upset. My question is, Mickey, and I think probably you just said you were going to do this. Can you give us the amount of money that we appropriate, appropriated for 2021 minus disparity? The, the special money that was put in and the total amount that in the Governor's budget that's been budgeted? Is that any place that we can look at or could you do that?
That's essentially row 26 on this document. So the additional disparity in free and reduced lunch is included on row 27.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
But like I said, we're going to dive way into this on Wednesday with the department and they'll, you know, I'll reach out to them ahead of time just so we've got all this on hand for Wednesday.
Thank you.
Representative Bucco?
Yes, thank you. So Mickey, I guess this is a related question, but on line 28 shows that for the current year, it's 1 billion 24 million for adequate education. And then, and then the 939 million and the 946 million for '22 and '23 represents about a $70 million cut from the 21, the 1 billion from '21. Is that about right?
I mean, yes, that's the difference between the two years. The Governor funded essentially the ed funding at the current law with just a little bit of a tweak to the ADM formula. So if you want to look at total dollars, you can see the decrease from year to year. There's also quite a bit going on with enrollments too. And you've heard that testimony just with what's going on with the, the projected ADMs for this coming year, which was used as a base for calculating these amounts for '22 and '23. But again, we're, we're going to get way more into this Wednesday. And but that's essentially what's going on with that.
Thank you.
Representative Petrie?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. On the, the HR 11, the Ways and Means estimates, how do that, how does that reconcile what we have here?
So going way up to the base revenues. So in the Education Trust, in this document here represented is just Education Trust Fund. These, these base revenues are about 50 million less than the Governor's base revenues. So this document here, and if I jump over to the Governors', so this is the Governor's surplus statement. So the Governor had anticipated the Education Trust Fund ending with a positive balance of 32, 32.2 million dollars at the end of fiscal '23. Right now with the House's revenues plugged in and everything else kept the same, mind you, it's anticipated to be about an $18 million need for general fund support. So versus 32.2 plus or 18 negative, that's about your $50 million difference in revenues there. There's also a difference in those House revenues on the general fund side. I don't have that on here. That's about another 30 million or close to. And like I said, Mr. Kane in our office is probably going to do something higher level with a combined general education surplus picture for the committee at some point soon.
Representative Heath?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one more question. I'm sorry. Is it within our authority, school districts across the state are just beside themselves because of the October 1 count, student counts in relation to student counts and then the free and reduced lunch because they are not coming in at all? Is it within our authority to hold them harmless with school numbers from 2020 instead of the '21 school year?
Yes, I mean, that, that's, you can direct through legislation what you want the Department of Education to use either for inputs or just a flat out, you know, it's referred to as a hold harmless sometimes, just a flat funding at a dollar level. We can legislate anything in House Bill two related to how much gets paid for education funding.
Thank you.
The, the only thing about that, and I would defer to the department, is challenges relative to timing and local budgets and all that, you know, and how the state aid works. So the technical aspect of it is another thing, but from a state perspective to expend those dollars, yes, that's, that's in the context of one and two, the House Bill one and two.
So follow up, Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, please.
So the only way that we could help because they're doing their budgets basically right now in town meetings and all of that. So the only way that we actually, the Finance Committee could actually, well, maybe there isn't a way we could actually help them. It would have to be a bill that was sent to us like the one that's coming from the Senate that we would have to move along quickly and get authorized and then get that over to the Governor's desk. That's the only way that actually we could help them with that for. That's the only way that actually we could help them with that for the, the fiscal year that they need the help with.
Possibly. I, I mean, I, the timeline of House Bill one and two, you're talking end of June effective for one July. So if the idea would be to authorize that money officially sooner than that, so districts could plan and budget, yeah, you would need a piece of legislation sooner than the timeline of the budget.
Thank you.
But actually, I, if, if in fact that went into HB two, even though the school district may not know what they're getting, they could in fact just simply accept that money. It doesn't have to be done now. You know, when, when, when the distribution is made in the three times a year that they, they accept the money. It, it's not, it's not hard and fast as to what we, what we put in. And I would personally prefer that whatever occurs would be in HB two and that I would think that you know, we have to, we have to send a balanced budget over to the Senate. And so if we decide to put more money into adequate education aid, then we have to take it from someplace else within the Education Trust Fund. So it's going to be a balancing act for us as to what, what do we want to support? And it may be best at this point to obviously hear what DOE has to say, but to leave whatever the adequate education is and then press for the Senate to increase it based on their projections of what's coming. I, I mean, I was, I was flabbergasted that this is what the Ways and Means Committee unanimously put forward to us. So it's, you know, it's obviously what, you know, it's like any compromise is what you can get through. And so I was not part of the Ways and Means discussion, so I don't have any idea who did what to whom. But, but that's, that's just my feeling at this point. Mickey, I do want to ask about the sixty-two five. Was that targeted to something special?
Yep. So that was the initial estimates of the time of the total related to the fiscal capacity disparity aid and the additional free and reduced lunch. So the one-time money, that was the estimate of what it was going to be was sixty-two five. So that's why that was put aside two years ago with the anticipation that was going to be, be the amount paid out in twenty-one. However, that's contributing to some of that sixteen point four million dollar lapse just because of what happened with enrollments. And, you know, we, we make estimates two years out for ed funding, which is difficult. So it ended up being a little bit less than sixty-two five all told, which is why some of that was freed up and that sixty-two point, sixteen point four million dollar lapse.
Okay, so that lapse stays within the Education Trust Fund. Is that correct?
Correct. Yep, that's entirely that restricted money. It said any unexpended portion would go back to the Education Trust Fund. That's the way it was written in House Bill two.
Okay, now, I know we're going to get into the HB two stuff, but the governor did say that we would use the free and reduced lunch numbers from, was it two thousand nineteen?
Uh, yeah, I think I'm going to hold off on speaking to the details of House Bill two because like, like you all, I think I've seen an early draft, not sure what's gonna change. But I can tell you the, the numbers and the backup to calculating those numbers made a, an adjustment to the free and reduced lunch numbers to bring them up. I'm not sure it was entirely back to what the numbers were in fiscal twenty. I think there's a formula that's going to be proposed that's going to bring those numbers up and we'll get into that definitely when we get House Bill two. But hopefully we can get into that with more detail Wednesday as well with the department. I just don't want to say it is one way and then we get House Bill two and it's slightly different than that, you know, that's, that's my whole concern.
Yeah, I, I understand that. Okay, so all right, let's go on to twenty-three, well, twenty-two and twenty-three, which are, which are not looking too good.
So to finish up fiscal twenty-two here, if you look at line thirty-four, the governor's budget proposes transferring fifteen million dollars a year to the Public School Infrastructure Fund. All of you may be familiar with this. It was in somewhat of a wind down mode. It was funded with some state surplus dollars a couple of times over the years, provided many grants across the state to school districts. And the governor's budget proposes fifteen million dollars in each fiscal twenty-two and twenty-three to that fund. So taking into consideration all the revenues, revenue adjustments and anticipated expenditures, the current year balance for fiscal twenty-two ends with a two point six million dollar deficit, which would require on line forty, you see a transfer in from the general fund of two point six million dollars to get back to a zero balance again. So I put on the very bottom here a cumulative general fund support. So just so you know, so remember, we took, we needed ninety-eight thousand dollars last year. Add the two point six million dollars this year. Now we're up to two point seven. This budget proposal to this point needs two point seven million dollars from the general fund to balance the Education Trust Fund. Not a whole lot difference, twenty-two or excuse me, twenty-three is essentially the same story as twenty-two. You've got your base revenues, you've got your revenue adjustments. Second year of these tax changes have a little bit bigger of an impact. So you see the adjustments on line twenty-two go from five point six million negative last year to twelve million dollars in fiscal twenty-three to get to a ten point zero six billion dollar total revenue in twenty-three. Here we've got our education funding programs, the fifteen million dollars this year to this Public School Infrastructure Fund. Fiscal twenty-three ends with a negative balance of close to sixteen million dollars. Transfer in that from the general fund back to a zero balance. Add that nearly sixteen to the previous two point seven. All told, the general fund would chip in eighteen and a half million dollars in this budget proposal to balance the Education Trust Fund. And that's where we're at. That's your starting point essentially in Division two when it comes to the Education Trust Fund.
Okay, I don't like that starting point. Representative Murray?
Thank you. So in the revenues with the changes to BET and all that, we're losing about sixty-one million dollars and then sixty-seven million dollars in revenues from twenty-one to twenty-two, twenty-two to twenty-three. I'm looking at line twenty-three.
So the only thing there is I would caution is that sixty-two and a half million dollars wasn't really revenue of fiscal twenty-one. That was just that set aside money that we pulled in to spend in twenty-one. So if you back out that sixty-two and a half million dollars on line sixteen, your revenues actually are really flat. They, you know, if you just look at your base revenue in twenty-one, because it'll back, it won't include that sixty-two five, it's one point zero six five billion. And then if we jump down here after adjustments, you're almost right on the money.
I see.
You know, so it's pretty flat if you just ignore that set aside money that we pulled back in.
So there's a six million from twenty-two to twenty-three?
Correct, correct.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any other questions on Education Trust Fund? Representative Lynn?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Mickey, I wonder, I, I, I want to make sure that I'm understanding something that, the, and maybe, maybe this is, is something we're going to talk about more on Wednesday, but the, the projections for the, the transfers to the, starting on line twenty-five, those projections is, I know that I, I think Representative Heath makes, was concerned about using the October, I guess, last year numbers for, for student enrollments. And I, I, I guess what I'm, I, I guess I wanted to explore that a little bit more. I, I'm not sure I understand what the problem is with using those numbers. And, and if, if part of the problem is that, you know, that was during the sort of COVID, during the middle of COVID, I guess what I'm wondering is that, you know, to the extent that those reflect a, a a drop in student population, is it out of line with the drop that I, as I understand it, has been going on for several years? In other words, is there a precipitous drop last year that, you know, that is much higher than it was from, from the, it going back, you know, several bienniums?
That's a good question. Total enrollments have been on the decline, which is naturally, since ed funding is a per capita program, it has naturally just decreased the total adequacy grant statewide. From what the department put out there for estimates for this coming year were significantly less than that trend, and they were pandemic related, both in base total number of students and then as well for free and reduced lunch population. So you may remember, I think Commissioner Edelblue was speaking to this last week with us. You know, this trying to get students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch population identified as so, because that's what drives the state formula. So lunch was provided, meals were provided, is my understanding, to all students regardless of qualification in that regard. So it really sent a decline in the number of students who were identified as eligible for free and reduced lunch meals, which that's the data set that the department uses for calculating grants. And that's, they're bound by that in law, which is why there's been a couple bills this session to modify the data set that the Department of Education would use to calculate grants for the next two years, you know, recognizing that some of the data may have been impacted because of the pandemic.
Thank you.
Representative Heath, you have a question?
Just, just a comment to respond also to Representative Lynn. All those dollars and, and the Commissioner Edelblue talked a little bit about this too. Those numbers that have been driven and the, the lower number based directly due to the pandemic have a huge impact all across the board because not only does it impact the amount of money that school districts get, it ultimately impacts greatly the number of federal funds that we get. New Hampshire already gets small state minimums, but the, the money that comes into New Hampshire is driven by those free and reduced numbers. So it's critical how we look at those and that's why getting those numbers to what they really are is critically important for our state of New Hampshire.
Okay, are there any other questions on the Education Trust Fund at this point? Okay, Mickey, you have provided us with a lot of food for thought here. And if this isn't bad enough, I'm really excited to go to the Highway Fund. And this one is going to be really difficult for us because so much money is, goes to, goes to safety. And so we have to make sure as we're looking through this that we're able to balance what safety uses and what highway uses. So I will let you start, Mickey.
All right. So similar format to the Education Trust Fund document, so all this should flow in the same way. So I'm gonna go through it a little bit quicker, but raise your hand, stop me, interrupt me if I'm going too fast. So house-based revenue estimates, when it comes to the Highway Fund, we're talking unrestricted road toll, which is also referred to as the gas tax, and then all your unrestricted revenue relative to motor vehicle fees and fines. All collected by safety. These estimates, my understanding are the agency estimates that were adopted by House Ways and Means, which were over the three years about six million dollars, six point two, I believe, less than the governor's estimates. So that's essentially your, your your nexus from where the governor's budget was to where you're starting. So starting with fiscal twenty-one, we started with a budgetary balance of nearly sixty-four million dollars. Ways and Means estimates are two hundred and thirty-eight million for the year. Then if you recall, and, and folks who have been on the division before remember this, the Department of Safety has Highway Fund appropriations in two different ways, really. One of them is a straight highway funds, which most of them reside in the Division of State Police. When you pull up their budget, you will see highway funds and it's clear. In the Division of Motor Vehicles, there's all those accounts, most of those accounts are funded with agency income, which is really the cost related to collecting and administering highway fund revenue. And this is something that's in statute and in the Constitution that directs the Department of Safety to net off the cost that it takes them to collect the revenues from these different sources and then remit the difference to the Highway Fund. So the revenue adjustments that we have here on line ten, this is how much the Department of Safety is appropriated in the areas of costs of collecting and administering highway fund revenue. We assume they're not going to spend every nickel that we appropriate in the budget, so that we, we account for a lapse there. On line twelve is your net impact of essentially the Division of Motor Vehicle and some indirect costs at the department, the costs associated with collecting and administering highway fund revenue. So it's about thirty million dollars a year. So we take this thirty million dollars off the, the gross revenue of the two hundred and thirty-eight point three, gets to about two hundred and eight million dollars of net revenue to the Highway Fund in fiscal twenty-one. Everyone still with me on that? Because cost of collections can be a little tricky. Okay, appropriations, transfers. Three departments in the current budget have direct Highway Fund appropriations, Department of Transportation, Department of Safety, and then the Judicial Branch. Transportation is a lion's share of it. Most of it resides in operations and local aid in the, the block grant line. Department of Safety, most of that, like I said, is in State Police. And we can get breakdowns, and you've actually got some of the breakdowns and that's some of the documents that agencies have given you as far as specifics in the governor's recommended budget as far as which divisions and accounting units that they're budgeted in. And then Judicial Branch has, for, before my time, always had a two million dollar Highway Fund appropriation to subsidize their general fund budget, and it's always been the same amount. I think the nexus is they adjudicate motor vehicle traffic-related cases. So the Highway Fund supports the Judicial Branch, and that's the two million dollars there you see on line nineteen. On line twenty-one, the governor's recommended budget assumed that in fiscal twenty-one that there would be a nine million dollar need for the Department of Transportation relative to winter maintenance to pull from the Highway Fund surplus. To date, only four and a half million has been brought through fiscal and approved. The remaining four point five million, I think, is just anticipating they could need more by the end of this year. So this could be something that we would want to monitor for the next couple of months because if it's deemed that they don't come back for another draw, the winter just, we have spring tomorrow and it's great. Or, you know, maybe they need more than nine. I'd say the number on line twenty-one is a, a fluid number at this point. So we'll monitor that to see how much more or less the department will need to fund winter operations for the rest of this year. We've got on line twenty-two, this is merely just an accounting action related to some revenue that, you know, it gets dispersed to other funds, mostly related to the unrefunded road toll. So this is like the gas tax that folks pay for fuel that goes into their boat or lawnmower, is my understanding. So there's credit back for the tax on that. So this, this line twenty-two is really just an accounting line. And then just like the other funds on line twenty-three, we assume a lapse. If you see fiscal twenty-one is much higher than twenty-two and twenty-three. If you see, fiscal '21 is much higher than '22 and '23, and you heard some of this when the department was in. Some of their spending was down. There was some direction to limit some spending a little bit for fiscal '21. My understanding is a lot of work has gone into these lapse numbers in formulating what they are. I think if you wanted to explore those more with the department, they could speak more to them. But I think at this point, the lapse is at a place that the Governor's Office and the departments are comfortable with, but it's certainly something you can discuss with them if you'd like to. So taking those adjustments off of the $266 million appropriation from the operating budget gets down to a $248 million net draw. And if you remember, our revenue this year was only 208, which means in fiscal 2021, there's a negative nearly $40 million, and that would essentially come from that carryforward balance that we started the year with. Highway Fund, we try to balance on a GAAP basis. So we recognize at the end of every fiscal year, there's some payables, some liabilities, some accounting adjustments that need to be made. These numbers came from the Comptroller's Office. And I don't really see much of a need to explore those further. We can, if you'd like, we can, we can we can dive into those. Usually, we don't. So once you take into consideration GAAP adjustments, this year is anticipated and with a negative balance. Do you have questions at this point, or can I, I want to move on?
Mickey? With a with a negative balance, what's the, what's the overall effect of that?
And it's one I've asked before too. Essentially, there's, I think, one of the biggest concerns is that it could just affect bond ratings, you know, that the fund is in a negative position, you know, on an accrual basis. I think if I shared anything more than that, it would be not super informed. So if that is something we want to explore, we should reach out to the Comptroller's Office and and maybe get an opinion from them and and just kind of an explanation of really what does that mean? If we end the fund with a budgetary surplus but a GAAP deficit, what does that mean? You know, what's the impact? And I and I think that's appropriate to to explore.
Yes, I I I certainly would appreciate you doing that, Mickey. Let's see. Representative Buco, I think you had a question?
Yes, thank you. I think you just asked it, but I was just wanted to clarify for my own just what the estimated GAAP adjustment is. It's 27 million. It's it's pretty large.
And most of it is just, I think, accounts payable. It's just liabilities on the books at the at June 30 that that the Highway Fund has future expenditures related to. I mean, if if for the committee's information, if we did want to dive into you know, the GAAP adjustment and the GAAP balance, I I think we could, I could reach out to the Comptroller's Office. Like I said, we can get get some more information on that.
Thank you.
Representative Lynn, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Mickey, I I guess the mine is sort of a follow-up maybe to Representative Buco's. I understand, I I think I understand the the $27 million GAAP adjustment. But I, what I'm not sure I understand then is where if 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 the, if there's a deficit of the $3,156 at the end of fiscal '21, when I, when you go to fiscal '22, you don't start with that number, but you start with the 23844. So I'm not I'm not quite sure I understand. You know, and and then the same thing and for from 22 to 23. I think. So I could you just explain that?
Sure. So the GAAP adjustment is something that is for an account presentation, like a fun presentation from an accounting standard point of view. But it reverses when you start the next year. So there's like a reversing entry that I'm getting into deep, deep accounting that we usually don't do with with Finance Committee. But essentially, that is a snapshot in time representative that as of June 30 fiscal '21, this is the state of the Highway Fund. But that GAAP entry would reverse because there's an expectation you're going to be making those payments and all those liabilities are part of your budget that next year. So it's really just to show the state of the Highway Fund that, yes, we have $23 million in the bank, but we have $27 million in bills outstanding. We only carry the budgetary balance forward because we assume those $27 million in bills are going to be paid in that next year. We're already paying for them here. I'm probably not explaining this overly well, and it is a confusing thing. But if if, like I said, I don't think you would harm, because I I don't think we've done it in my time with Division Two, which is pushing a decade now. Just kind of hearing from the Comptroller perhaps, or even the Director of Finance, Maria DOT, will be able to walk the division through the, you know, financial statements presentation of the Highway Fund. And that's really what we're talking here. From a budgetary point of view, if you only cared about money in the bank, it's this line. You know, it's the budgetary balance line, but the the precedent has always been to try to balance the Highway Fund on a GAAP, on an accrual basis, GAAP basis too.
Thank you.
Obviously, that makes perfect sense, right, Bob? Okay. Mickey, so if I'm looking at this correctly, that at the, with the the shortage in '21, that we have now reduced the quote-unquote surplus in '22 to '23, 844.
Correct. That's right.
So we're starting out at 23844.
Yep. Yep. So if we carry that balance forward representative to how we, we're going to start with fiscal '22 with that, it's essentially the same situation for revenue. Base revenues are bumped up a little bit. I think this is related to just hopefully more people on the road, more people the plan for the next two years versus the last two, more fuel will be consumed and more road toll will be paid on that. So we should see a bump in revenue. We've got our Department of Safety appropriations. There's a couple of things going on in fiscal '22. First, on line 13, on line 13, back in 2018, when we had a general fund surplus, one of the uses for, I believe it was a $20 million appropriation was a general fund appropriation to the Department of Transportation for bridge work, for red list bridge projects. I think it's been identified there's $8.1 million remaining in that appropriation. And the governor's budget recommends lapsing that remaining appropriation right into the Highway Fund to help balance the Highway Fund. So that one-time adjustment of revenue, you will see that in House Bill Two, and that essentially helps the bottom line of the Highway Fund by $8.1 million. Another thing to point out here on, in fiscal '22 is the Department of Transportation's draw appropriations off the Highway Fund. So you see how last year, or current year rather, 230 fiscal '23, 232, and it's way down in fiscal 21, 22. And if you recall, the department talked about having some federal money available that they were able to supplant in operations to the tune of about $42 million, I believe it was. So when we look at the Highway Operations Accounting Unit in the budget document, the big budget document, highway funds are way down, and there's a federal fund plug-in there because of some available federal dollars that were pandemic-related, I believe, to help run or help operate transportation systems. So that is a big help to the bottom line of the Highway Fund. Otherwise, you'd have a $41 million higher transportation appropriation here, which of course would affect your bottom line accordingly. So that's why DOT is so much lower in this middle year is related to that.
Mickey? Is that money from the December relief bill?
I believe it is, but I can confirm. I I know we'll have the department in later this week to confirm that, but I it's money that's already been approved. It's not an anticipation of something to be improved.
Okay, so, so is is this money going in the budget? Or is it going to come in through fiscal?
It's in the budget. So it's in House Bill One, or it will be in House Bill. It's in the Governor's Recommended Budget Document. So it wouldn't be something accepted through fiscal. It would be budgeted.
Okay, thank you. Tom, you have a question?
I guess, thank you. I I just, is that, is that shown on this document?
So the $41 million?
Yeah, is it, is it, yes. But well, the Fed, yeah, that federal money, is that, is that somewhere within these numbers?
It's not, it, the money doesn't actually go to the Highway Fund. It just reduces how much Highway Fund has to be used. So when you look at this line representative, you see that the DOT Transportation or the DOT appropriation goes from 230 million down to 182, back to 232. Back to where you see it. Let me, if I can here, because you can see it right in the budget. Here we go. So if you look at the Highway Maintenance Bureau, this is one of the largest accounting units of Highway Funds at the department. So there are Highway Funds, you can see on this line here. I don't know if you can see that well.
That's fine.
We'll go from $66 million this year to $22 million next year. And federal funds go from zero to 41 million. That's, that's where you see it, is in this accounting unit. So it really reduces the draw from Highway Funds in this year because there's federal funds in their place.
Oh, that shows up right there. Thank you.
Representative Heath, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So in the event that more funds from the federal government come in specific to COVID, will we be appraised with that? Because that, right now, with the governor's executive order, he has pretty much authority over all of that. And we don't get an accounting of that. How would we find out how it might impact our budget one way or the other?
Was that question for me?
Yes.
So, so if if funds are accepted, federal funds accepted and budgeted through the executive order, I believe those are reported to fiscal, and we can ask for that information from the departments as we go through this process. An option while the budget is being worked on is to actually add those appropriations to House Bill One. You know, that can still be done throughout this process if there's a, we know we're going to get this federal money, you know. Or, you know, the more traditional way would have been, you know, outside of the budget process to accept those dollars through fiscal. So there's, there's a few options. I don't really know what the course of action would be should money become available from Washington during this process.
All right, thank you.
Representative Heath, if you, if you remember from our discussion with Commissioner Edelblue, he had mentioned that there was an additional $157 million that had come into DOE.
Yes.
On one of the, whatever, grants. Yeah, S or whatever. Yes, let me, let me get my piece of paper here. Yeah, under S or two. And so it appears that DOE has chosen not to put that in the budget.
Okay.
Okay, and so whereas DOT chose to put that in the budget. So I don't know if there's, I don't think there's any consistency across the various departments.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. If I can ask one more question. I remember I was actually working at the department in 2008 when we had the ERA money. And during that time, we used about 200 million, I believe, of that money to balance our adequacy, because we, back then, were in a big hole. So what I'm here, what I think I'm hearing you say is that Commissioner Edelblue has chosen not to use any of those federal dollars that come under the authority of the Department of Ed to go into the state money that we send to school districts. I know, I know that school districts are getting allocations that go directly to them. So that, that we can't do anything about that, that that has to go to them. But the funds that go to the Department of Ed can't be used otherwise, other, unless the commissioner accepts that fund to be used in a different way. I don't know if I'm making any sense.
Yeah, you're making sense. But, but only if you've spent a million years working on education funding. The real key here is, and I don't know the answer to this, and we can talk a little bit more to DOE about it. But whether there is specific guidance from the federal government as to how those dollars can be spent. And they may not be able to be spent for things that we would like to spend them for. And I, yeah, I also saw a report that showed the fact that a lot, I think it was, I don't remember what the figure was, but a lot of money that has been sent to the school districts that has not been spent yet. And so it's, you know, it's a real balancing act as to, you know, how do we, how do we handle this? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
If I could just add, I actually had a meeting with Commissioner Edelblue in the Manchester School District just about that. Because I was concerned, because I had been working with Caitlin to see about the second round of SIR money coming in from Manchester. And and we learned that they had not drawn down very much money, but then we found out that they had a huge technology order that had been delayed, and that's why the money was, and I think that's happening across our state. But I think more, more importantly, my my big concern and and hope maybe is that if new dollars come in with new federal dollars, that we will have some authority to help in ultimately balancing our state general funds budget with some federal funds is is what my hope is to help us out. And I don't know if I'm just being too optimistic about that.
Yeah, part of, part of the concern is that, just like the 62 million that was distributed this year, you know, and went out and explained that it was one-time money for, you know, hard, you know, things that you didn't have to replace every year. And, you know, school boards made decisions. And that's the, that's the real one of the real problems that we have. And I, you know, I'm all for local control, but it also throws a big monkey wrench into what the state can and cannot do. So I'm glad that transportation has decided to do this. So Mickey, you want to talk to us about the rest of this mess?
Yeah, well, there's not a whole lot else to get into super detail with. It's just that year would end with $49 million on a budgetary basis in the Highway Fund. We kind of do the same thing again, carry it forward to start '23, based on our expected revenues and budgeted appropriations as of right now in the Governor's Recommended Budget. These are the $16 million budgetary balance. If we want to show our liabilities and receivables, the position, the net position is really a negative for the Highway Fund. And I will get, like I said, I will get a memo or something, some explanation from the Comptroller's Office and from the department to, just so we're more informed on the impacts of balancing the Highway Fund on a budgetary versus a GAAP basis. Just so that'll help make your decisions as you move forward.
Yeah, I I think that will be extremely helpful to us. And it's and I, you know, it is the Highway Fund. That's, that's the, that's the, the real problem. So okay, can we take a five-minute break? And then we'll press on to what we may think is in HB2. Okay, five minutes. As soon as, uh, Bob returns, we'll, uh, go ahead, and Chris, I'm so happy that you're here. I would, uh, I would like to say that, uh, I'm not real happy about what Ways and Means has done to us. And I know you don't have a lot of influence in that, but, um, something's got to give.
I'm just staffing for the Ways and Means, so I do what they ask me to do.
Yeah, that's no excuse, you know that.
Thanks for adding us on to the mailing list, by the way.
Uh, not a pro- the, not a problem, um, are you getting the Revenue Focus as a committee? From?
I get, I get it individually.
Uh, Representative Murray, you haven't received the Revenue Focus from Administrative Services?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask them to add the Finance Committee as well.
Seems like we were getting it last round.
Finance Committee was, last session, the Finance Committee was on. Actually, the Ways and Means Committee wasn't, so. So they got, I think they got Ways and Means on this time and took you guys off, so I'll make sure you get that. That's actually, I, I would suggest probably a better tool to look at than the daily report that I would send out starting on the twentieth.
Yeah.
Because it actually provides a little bit more information in terms of why some of your revenues might be up or down for the month, and then gives you a, um, a year-to-date information as well. But happy to keep you, um, you know, on the daily revenues we do, just, uh, I know you guys get a lot of emails, so that's why I don't, um, chase it.
Oh, we appreciate it.
Yep.
I agree, thank you.
Welcome back, and, um, Mickey, if you would, uh, like to begin our tentative HB two stuff, okay? So please, I think Mickey has, uh, warned us significantly that, um, you know, what, what actually happens with the final version is, uh, what becomes our starting point and not necessarily what we have here. And I'm sure that as soon as HB two is available, that LBA will, um, send it to us, uh, either through the mail or UPS or whatever, FedEx or courier service.
Yeah, I think we'll definitely get a hard copy to you, you know, it's, it's a little lengthy of a document, of course, so, um, we'll send those out once we get them printed. Uh, and, and Representative, you're right in that I'm going to stay super high level. So we did get back when the governor's budget came out, a transmission from the governor's office with trailer bill language, uh, per the law's requirement, um, which it goes to the Office of Legislative Services, and they start, you know, working their magic to turn it into a, uh, in the proper format, references and all that of House Bill two. So I'll go over today with some of the topics that, um, we saw in the draft. I'm not going to get into any detail really, because, um, I know that there was just some clarifications back and forth still with the governor's office and OLS, so I don't want to be super confident on something and tell you about it from the draft document, and then it comes out different with the introduced bill, so. Some of this will be repetitive, we, stuff we already know about. So first with education funding. Um, I believe the only change that we're going to have there is relative to an adjustment to the free reduced lunch population for determining adequate education grants. The specifics of that, I think, will be slightly different than the bill, um, that, that's in, that's going to pass over from the Senate. As far as just straight-up using prior year counts, I think there's going to be a formula for determining the adjustment, and we'll should be able to go through that Wednesday with the department, because they would have been involved with, um, developing the budgetary number that's in House Bill one. The Public School Infrastructure Fund, um, the, the transfer from the Education Trust Fund to that dedicated fund will be in House Bill two. We saw it on the, the surplus document, the snapshot we went through earlier, the fifteen-million dollars a year. So it'll be up to the Division to support, change, delete, whatever, um, but whatever change we make to that would be a House Bill two amendment. We heard Friday an awful lot about the proposal to form in, in the New Hampshire College and University System Board of Trustees and explore a, uh, consolidation of the two systems, a unification. We will see all the details of at least what's going to be proposed, legislated this session, and what the charge would be for that Board of Trustees moving forward. All the specifics, of course, all this would be in House Bill two. We saw a little bit of the House Bill one change, just the structure of the budget, merging those two into one agency, so to speak, and one accounting unit for their block appropriation. Um, but most of the work and the decision-making would be in House Bill two for, for this.
Yes, Representative Heath, you have a question?
Yes, um, going back to the merger, um, I've been trying to figure out what the difference was, um, in the merger year, and it looks like there's, um, a total reduction in the amount of money going to both, well, I don't know how it's going to go. But, uh, do you have the exact figure of how much that reduction is?
Oh, um, well, I can show you the page from, uh, the budget, and we can maybe do a.
What page is that?
My, grab it here, hopefully, let's see.
I can't, they'll ask me, and I'm sure.
Yeah, page, uh, one-two-nine-five, is where you'll see the, the appropriations.
All right.
And then just the one thing to remember when, when looking at those, I think you can see my screen here, I'll, maybe zoom in a little.
I can.
The, the amounts for, um, twenty, fiscal twenty, the university system included nine-million dollars one-time money for the nursing program.
Yeah.
And the community college included, I want to say three-point-two-million dollars of one-time money for a IT really, I, I can't remember the specifics. So that, that first year includes some one-time money when you're looking at the four years across the board, just, just wanted to point that out.
All right, thank you.
I think, Representative Petrie.
I'm sorry, Representative Petrie.
Not a problem, uh, thank you. Right, Donnie, can you tell me what the chancellor's, uh, budget is for the university system?
Um, I can get that information for you, I don't, I don't know it off the top of my head. That, that doesn't appear in the, the state or House Bill one, of course, so I'd have to reach out to Kathy Preventure, and she can get us the, the details on that for you.
Right, could you make that all-inclusive?
Yep.
Thank you.
And that was just for USNH or for?
Yeah, well, you can compare the two, it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt to have the community college system also, and just a comment, uh, you're a one awesome individual.
Agree.
So moving on, uh, scholarship programs, I think we're going to see some recommendations to the existing state scholarship programs as well as the development of the workforce, um, student debt relief program. Uh, for those who have been on finance, you know, if you remember from last session, this was something that came in House Bill two, um, to, uh, finance from the governor's office, a similar plan. It ultimately ended up not being in the house budget and ended up being debated quite a bit in the Senate, but ultimately it didn't happen two years ago. Uh, so this will be something that we will bring in the, the experts on these scholarship programs. So we'll have the, uh, unique program, the endowment, the direct allocation programs, the governor's scholarship program is under that advisory board as well, um, as well as, um, really moving forward with the new student debt relief proposal. Um, so again, none of this should affect general or head, or education trust funds in any way. Uh, this would be, the, the governor's scholarship program is a general funded program, but I don't think that's being changed in any way, uh, with this proposal. But just to be aware of that program, and that, that's in the Treasury's budget, so that's why we don't see it in any, anything that we have here, but that's a general fund appropriation. But the unique program, this, uh, workforce debt relief program, this would be from that, uh, the fidelity accounts assessment fees, the management fees that the state collects, that's a restricted source of revenue that's currently used for that endowment and scholarship program, and this just talks about spreading that money out to other uses too, the, it's mainly the workforce development student debt relief program. So moving on, we talked this morning with the highway surplus statement of the red-listed bridge appropriation lapse of the highway fund as a way to prop up the highway fund, so we will see that in House Bill two. So if you want to change that in any way, um, amend it, agree with it, delete it, uh, this, you'll see this change in House Bill two, and then we'll recognize it on the surplus statement.
Representative Murray, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. Is this, does this lapse have to happen, or could it stay, uh, could we consider to say, you know, I'm not proposing this, but, um, keep the eight million and work on those red-listed bridges?
So currently, that twenty-million-dollar original appropriation is non-lapsing and continually appropriated. So if you left it there, um, it would be available for the department to carry out the original purpose of that.
So we have a decision to make there, and we could get DOT's input on how they could best manage that fund, or, no, the money.
Yep, in, in, the only thing, just, uh, obviously, any change to that would affect the amount available for the highway fund, just to remember, but yes, yep.
Thank you.
Uh, Representative Heath, did you have, no, okay?
Uh, the last significant section of House Bill two from the draft that we saw was relative to establishing the body worn and dashboard cam fund, which, um, again, I don't want to speak to too many specifics, and I did put an amount in here, and I don't, I think it's going to remain. Uh, but there was an initial general fund appropriation, um, to fund this program, which essentially would be a matching program for local law enforcement agencies to buy, uh, replace, operate, um, body worn and dash cam, uh, systems with their department.
Representative Buco, you had a question?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. In the last budget, we approved, um, dash cameras for all the state police cruisers. Um, I asked the Commissioner about that, but I wasn't clear on his answer, because he said that we didn't do that, so, but did they just not, not institute the program, or what happened there, or do you know?
Uh, well, I, I don't know the specifics, but we can get that information with our follow-up with safety this week. I can tell you any amount that would have been appropriated and not expended would have lapsed back to the general and highway fund, so. Um, whether they did all their cruisers, none, something in between, I'm not sure. But we can talk to them about what happened with those appropriations in the current budget.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other question.
I should have started off by saying that I think this was the lightest load for Division two with House Bill two I've seen in a while, at least, even for an introduced version of the bill. Those, at least in the draft document, were the major impacts as far as policy to work on and direct budget impacts. There was many other sections that will be assigned to us to review, but, um, don't really have a direct budget impact, a material one. And I'll go through them real quick. So the Department of Safety, uh, in the current budget, they have some transfer authority language that allows them, with the approval of the Department of Administrative Services Budget Office, to transfer from some class lines that are otherwise restricted class lines to transfer from. Um, it was something granted to them two years ago, uh, as a way to offer flexibility that they seem, that they deem necessary to, uh, manage their budget for the two years, and it's something that the governor has supported for this, this biennium too, so. It'll be up to you to review that section and whether or not you want to give it to them, it won't have an, an impact, one way or another, on spending, so. It's really a, a policy decision, a finance policy decision. Uh, the Mechanical Licensing Board, we heard from the Department of Safety that this has been moved in this budget to the Office of Professional License and Certification. Uh, that accounting unit is zeroed out in safety, and, you know, it's transferred over to be a Division one budget to review now. Uh, and they will probably review the House Bill two section as well and give a thumbs up or thumbs down on this, it'll probably be something assigned to them. Generally, whenever there's a transfer of a, a unit or a function, when we assign division responsibilities, we usually give it to the, the accepting, uh, division. So in this case, Division one will probably decide on that, but I did put this on here just so you're aware of it, because it was something we had heard from the agency about.
Uh, Mickey, did you say that it was already in the budget in, uh, Office of Professional Licensor?
I believe it is, if, if you look at fire safety, um, in safety, that, that accounting unit zeroed out, and I believe it's, uh, that money is now resides in Office of Professional License and Share, those general funds.
So the only, the only question on this then is, um, do we think it's a good idea?
Right.
To move it?
And that could be a joint decision with Division one, you know, because they would have to be, yeah, we want OPLC, our professional licensor, to take this on, and Division two to be okay with, you know, sending that, uh, function over, over there, so. But in the budget, that how you have it before you, House Bill two and House Bill one will have it, so the money and the function is no longer at safety.
Okay, uh, for those of you that, I know probably Tom is aware of this, but, uh, we had been trying to, uh, move the mechanical licensing board over for years, and, um, it was, uh, hotly opposed by safety, but it appears they have, uh, changed their mind, so I'm, I'm real happy about that.
Uh, the next item, um, there is a section relative to, uh, radio equipment. Procurement, really, purchasing and, and outfitting radio across state agencies. Uh, we'll, we'll hear a little bit more about this from the department, but I think the idea is that the department would establish standards with the Department of Administrative Services, so, uh, there's a little bit more uniformity when it comes to this across all state agencies versus each state agency kind of going on their own when it comes to radio operations. I, I don't believe there's a direct budget. I don't believe there's a direct budget impact to that. I don't think there was any funding attributable to it, but that's, that's one that I kind of just have with an asterisk here that we just want to double check with the department to see if there is any direct or indirect budget impact. The last bullet for safety, I think, is one we can ignore. In the early draft, there was some capital appropriation lapses and repurposing within the Department of Safety from the last capital budget. My understanding is those sections are not going to be in House Bill 2 and they are going to be in House Bill 25. So it'll be up to Public Works and Highways to figure that out. It won't affect your House Bill 1 or 2. And this is just a good example of how we get the draft to House Bill 2 early, but that doesn't necessarily mean this stuff's going to be in House Bill 2 as introduced, you know. So I think we can ignore that, but I'll confirm with with the division once we actually get House Bill 2. Fishing game department?
Mickey?
I'm sorry, Chris, you have a, you have a question or a comment?
No, I just wanted to comment on on that capital appropriation. I know it's in House Bill 25. I worked with the governor's office to figure out where it really belonged. So they worked with OLS to remove it from House Bill 2 and to put it in 25. So you, you won't need to worry about that in your division.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So fishing game department in the draft document, there was a couple of sections relative to the statutory provisions around bear damage and the process for getting fishing game state reimbursement for the damage caused. I don't believe this has any impact on state general funds for sure. We, well, we can hear from the department or once we actually see the language, maybe, you know, we can figure out really what's going on if it's budget impact or just a policy thing that the department asks be included in House Bill 2. Department of Transportation, again, oh, I think we have a question.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Representative Murray, I was looking at my paper and not at my screen.
I do the same thing. I just wanted to go back and check because dispatch moved or fishing games dispatched, emergency dispatch moves to Department of Safety. And that's not reflected in HB 2. Is that be, you know, why is, why is that not here? I guess just it seems to be a change that's notable, but not necessarily going to affect us fiscally.
No, it's a good question. And again, the draft didn't have anything that was like explicit, you know, these functions move or whatever. I think positions maybe in House Bill 1 got transferred and the budget itself can do those without needing a House Bill 2 change. But we can confirm that with the departments to see if any legislation is necessary to make that change work. But I didn't see anything relative to that specifically in the in the draft document.
Thank you.
DOT, there's a few statutes changed that are mostly policy in nature. Or when I say they're not really going to directly impact your appropriations, I don't believe. One was changing some of the criteria relative to civil liability for folks who damaged the highway in any, in any way as far as getting a reimbursement or replacement charge to them or through insurance or however. Those are handled. I don't, I don't think that would necessarily be a revenue that we would address or it wouldn't impact anything like that. This would be just something DOT has identified as a change that they wanted and rec and requested as part of the budget process and it's in, was in the draft document. Similarly, we currently have a law relative to the disposal of proceed or the proceeds relative to the disposal of real estate purchase with highway or turnpike funds. It was silent, I believe, on federal funds and there's a section in here to say what happens with the proceeds of a sale of a realist, highway related real estate that was acquired with federal funds. Lastly, I noticed in the draft document, some sections that just added some definitions relative to unmanned aircrafts, drones. I didn't see anything related to anything direct to the budget with those. I think it was a, some policy stuff added, the department identified they needed. And again, per the usual, when when we get the department in to talk about these things, they can explain why they're needed or what the impacts are.
Mickey, before you, before you leave that. Is the transportation committee responsible for all of this or does some of it fall in public works? Like the civil liability? I mean, I'm just, I I just want to know which chairman I need to
Good question. I would say, I would say, I would say the first two, I mean, just would be Public Works and Highway perhaps. And then the aeronautics related stuff would be Transportation Committee, but maybe if, might be one of the things worth sending to both the chairman and getting their their comments on. I'm not sure and they could decide, oh, yeah, we do this or not. I'm not sure to answer the question.
Only because it's, you know, it's amending the law. And so we, we really need some sort of input. So I'll tell you what, I'll make sure that I harass both transportation and public works to get me something back on this.
And that has happened in the past. What we've done with finance is some of these policy related sections that show up in House Bill 2 will get feedback from the policy committee, you know, on them. I don't know if that's the plan this time. I think it's just a little bit early. We haven't even seen the bill and divvied up the sections yet by division to take that next step of whether or not the policy committees will be part of it, but that's definitely something I think the committee as a whole will have to figure out soon.
Representative Wyler did send out a, an email to all of the committees on the areas that in the draft would were affecting them and asked for, asked for input. So that has, that train has left the station.
Okay, good.
And obviously, if there's additional things that that come out or whatever, we'll have to follow up on that.
Okay. All right. The, the last section, and this is something that is a reoccurring section. So kind of back what you were suggesting before, Representative Lynn, as far as sections that appear in House Bill 2 over and over. So the New Hampshire Scholars Program has had language in House Bill 2 that allows for the Department of Education to accept grants, gifts, donations to fund that function. It was in the last House Bill 2, but it was for the biennium only. It's going to appear again in House Bill 2 as introduced for this biennium as well. If it's something that the committee supports, I mean, it could be codified. You could amend statute so it doesn't appear every year, you know, in the trailer bill. And that's something we can discuss when, when we're going through these sections.
Representative Heath, you have a question?
Yes, please. Actually, two that I want to ask, the first one was related to the New Hampshire Scholars Program. It's been zeroed out in the budget, but the line remains. I would like to see it continue. My understanding is from Debbie Scary, I've been talking with her about the scholars program because I know Senator DeLisandro was very upset about it, it, its demise. We thought it would be eliminated. They're going to try and figure out some way to keep it going. So is that what the intent is of that statement? And or would it be possible for us to contemplate maybe a small amount of money that can go? Because it used to be, I believe, 100,000 for each year of the biennium and now it's been eliminated.
And that's up to the division. So if you want to propose an amendment that adds a, you know, X dollars, whatever you pick into that line to keep that accounting unit on in the operating budget and then also have the House Bill 2 section that enables outside money to come in to fund it, that's, that's up to you.
Okay, thank you. And my second question is, going back to the top about the merger about between the community college and the university system. Would it be possible, and I don't know the answer to this, to have a public hearing through finance to get input from people about what we're seeing in House Bill 2 and in the budget? Just to get input, I feel like we haven't done due diligence in getting information about the merger. So would it be possible, is my question, to have a public hearing with regard to the merger?
Mary, that, that is certainly possible. And I can do it for Division 2 since the other folks have a lot of other things to do. Obviously, our, our meetings are open to the public and I have but I, I can certainly announce it for one day shortly that this will be a public hearing and then the folks will have to send in their, you know, whatever through yeah, through the website to, to talk about it. And I don't know, how does the rest of the committee think that this is a, a good idea? Can you just give me a thumbs up or what? Mickey, I'm only, I'm sorry, I'm, I haven't, don't see Representative Lynn and Representative Petrie, do you?
I do see them. I see a thumbs up for Representative Petrie.
Okay, represent, are you on board, Representative Lynn?
You know, I guess my only question would be, I mean, I, I don't really see a particular harm. But my only question would be, is this something that we ought to, we ought to sort of run up the flagpole, so to speak, and see how leadership feels about that. I'm, but I'm, you know, I, that's, I speak as a newcomer who doesn't really know a lot of the ins and outs of the, of how things work. So that, I, that's just a question. I have no particular, you know, view one way or the other on whether we should hold here.
Basically, under the old system, when we all used to arrive and conquered for our discussions. People that had interest in whatever we were talking about would be sitting in our room. And if there were questions or comments or thoughts. They would be expressed at that time. Although we didn't call it a public hearing, and I'm not sure that we will call this a public hearing, but we'll call it something that indicates that, that people should tune in and ask their questions. Now, the other thing is, is that sometime in late March, we will in fact be holding a budget public hearing to, to hear from, from people. And I'm not exactly sure when that's going to be. That'll be up to Representative Wyler. But I do want to, oh, thank you, Mickey, I do want to you know, I, I don't know how I'm going to, how I'm going to phrase it, but I think this is such a, a huge change that folks need to be aware of of what's going on. And I mean, all of us, you know, if you, if you know people that are current trustees, past trustees of either system or if, you know, you, you know, kids that are attending the schools, you know, they may not, they may not have an opinion on that. But, you know, we, we just need to, I think, to get a broad range of, of what's, of what's happening. And of course, we still really don't know what, what is the governor's, what the language is going to look like. And the language, I think, in this case, is going to be key to whatever happens.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, I miss the input that we used to get from the audience sitting with us.
Yes, I do too, and I have not seen anyone raise their hand as a participant. Because I think it was, it's clear in my opening statement that that is certainly an option for, for people. But I have not, although I don't check it all the time, I do check it every, you know, as we're finishing up things to see if the, if anybody out there in Zoom land has, has any questions, so. Okay, Mickey, I really want to thank you for what you did. I think it gives us all a, a clearer picture of, of where we are and, and what's happening. And although I am disappointed in what ways and means has given us to work with, that's what we have to work with. We have no choice. And so if we want to fund certain things, then we have to realize that we got to take it from someplace. And, and that's, that's, that's got to be the way it is. So it's, you know, we can, we can juggle around the money within the education trust fund. But we can't create new money unless someone has a money tree out back that is still growing. It's too cold up here for me to have a money tree, so. Okay, um, I think that our next meeting is Wednesday at 10 o'clock when we will be talking to DOE. In particular, I think we were going to focus on adequate education. Is that correct? And I do think that one day shortly, we'll need to go through all of the division, all of the departments on more of a line by line discussion. And so that where we're seeing, you know, trap, highway funds, general funds, all of these things. We really need to, to look at that, obviously, a little more closely than what we have. And I also, if you do have a chance before, is DOT on Thursday?
I think we have DOT Friday.
Okay, safety's Thursday, DOT's Friday. So if you have a chance to look through what Mickey sent us on DOT, I know that for those that have been on finance before, that is a very detailed explanation and of what is, what's going on in, in DOT. So we'll, we'll look forward to seeing everyone at 10 o'clock on Wednesday.
Thank you all. Thank you, Mickey. Take care.
Yeah, thanks for joining us, Chris.
And as always, if anyone, if you have any questions that come to you later today as you're looking through the stuff, just feel free to reach out.
Okay, you can close her down. Thank you.
Thank you.